September 25th, 2019, a regular meeting of the Fenton Community High School District 100 Regular Board meeting to order. Mary, may I have a roll call?
Yes.
Jowick?
Here.
Peyton Howell?
Here.
Figaroa?
Here.
Rego?
Here.
Ramirez?
Here.
Ting Paul Pong?
Here.
Weiderman?
Here.
We have a quorum. If everyone could please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, could you please read our Fenton mission statement and beliefs?
Of course. Our mission: Cultivate successful, passionate learners through rigor, relevance, and relationships. Our beliefs: Successful, passionate learners thrive when we champion innovative teaching and engaged learning, school and home collaborate effectively, we provide a safe, secure, and caring environment, we infuse social, emotional learning into academics and culture, diversity empowers our learning community, and we prepare students to fulfill their civic responsibility.
Thank you, Michelle. We will now open the public hearing for the 2019-2020 budget. Patty, will you please read the attestation certificate of the 2019-20 tentative budget preparation and availability?
I, Patricia Jowick, board member and secretary, attest that a tentative budget for the fiscal year 2019-2020 was prepared and made available for public inspection for a period of at least 30 days prior to the hearing.
Thank you, Patty. Bruce, will you please present the tentative 2019-2020 budget, which was prepared by the administration in cooperation with the Finance Committee?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Weiderman. So tonight, I'll just want to run through a brief slideshow and talk a little bit about the tentative to the final budget and what some of those changes look like. But I did want to kind of run through the process and the adoption phase and where we're at. And I think many of you know this, but for everyone's benefit, I wanted to share the timeline. So if we can start with that slide, the legal requirements for budget adoption, we've prepared it in tentative form, that's been on display, as Ms. Jowick just stated, for 30 days, the public hearing, which is what we're in now, if all goes well, we'll adopt it tonight, and then we will file it with the state and other required entities as required. And then you have the ISB state form that was emailed to you, as well as the official document that it has to be prepared on and submitted to the State Board of Education. So here's, you know, many of the factors that impact the budget are fund balance, you know, we've talked a lot about that, the property tax levy, we know we're constrained by the CPI limits there, our projected enrollments, and we've been fortunate, our enrollments have been pretty stable, so we haven't had great fluctuations either way. Staffing and benefits are up there. I have a hard copy for you, just in case our technology goes out. But if you want to follow along on your hard copy sheet, we can just keep moving along. There we go. Staffing and benefits obviously go into the, are a major piece of it, collective bargaining agreements, which we have three different bargain units, our capital projects, infrastructure needs, as we know, we have had some projects happening there this summer, our long-term revenue and expenditure projections, and our deficit spending reduction plans, if those were to become necessary. So we maintain eight funds, those highlighted ones, bolded ones are the ones we refer to as our operating funds. The other funds are really special purpose funds, are only to be used for those designated purposes. The next slide is, kind of just talks about those operating funds that we use, and those are all subject to the tax cap. So those five funds are what we refer to as our operating funds. Next slide is, and again, just the operating funds there. The major sources of revenue, property taxes, no surprise there, corporate personal property replacement taxes are that CPPRT, and that's really state funding in lieu of taxes, really is what that is, student fees, and interest on investments. And then our state funding sources, our evidence-based funding formerly, general state aid, which is, that's been retitled, mandated categorical grants, and really, it's, we're talking about mainly transportation when that category. And then our federal funds are the title grants, our idea funds, and then the National School Lunch Program, which is what we belong to as well. You know, the various expenditure types, and this follows along with the state budget form, so we follow that as required, but the types of expenditures, our instructional programs, obviously, our teachers, teacher aides, all the costs associated with that classroom would be included there, support services, and administration, which would include our guidance, social work folks, and our administrators would be included in that category of expenditures, operations and maintenance, which are building and ground staff, technology expenditures, our, you know, Chromebooks, our laptops, anything technology-related, our capital projects, and that's some of the things we've done this, this summer with various fitness center and other drainage issues and things like that, and finally, our debt service. So the objects, expenditure categories are objects, the state refers to them as objects, but they're really kind of interchangeable categories, as I guess I'll refer to it as. Those salaries, benefits, purchase services, all those kinds of expenditure objects are included in the budget and categorized in that manner. And then I wanted to talk a little bit about a budget initiative. So these are some of the things either we've begun, they're ongoing, or we're going to launch, but our, we've worked very hard this summer, and Michelle can speak to this, I think, their curriculum alignment, our summer learning enhancements, our freshman boot camp, professional development, in particular personalized learning that's happening this year, our SEL, social emotional learning, and our equity programs, they're underway and happening, our community report, which I think you're aware of, and that'll be being, going out to the entire community, some security enhancements, and then finally, our facility assessment that we'll have conducted, and all these really are related to our strategic plan as well. So some of the changes from the tentative to the final budget, and the tentative budget was presented on August 13th, the operating fund revenues increased by about, just over $300,000, or just under 1%, and then operating fund expenditures increased by that $187,000, 0.61%, a little bit over a half a percent. So the comparison of budgets, tentative budget to final budget, property taxes are projected to increase by about 2.6%. Other funding sources are projected to decrease, actually, by 2.1%, and overall revenues are projected to increase by 1.7%, and these are compared to their FY '19 unaudited actuals. And then our expenditures are projected to increase by 6.8% compared to unaudited actuals. And then when we compare the '19 budget to the '20 budget, the increase is about 1.8%. If we look at just the comparison of the actuals, it's at 6.8%, and part of that is, you know, we did, we underspent the budget last year, so that gap is bigger, causing a greater increase, but if you look at the budget, it's just under 2%. And then overall, the budget has an operating fund surplus of about $375,000, and that's an increase of about $112,000 from the tentative, and that's primarily driven by the increase in the projections from the state for the corporate personal property replacement taxes. So I think the, everyone's been kind of familiar with this chart, I know it's kind of a busy chart, but it gives you all the funds at a glance, separated by the operating funds on the left, and the, and the fund names below that, the non-operating funds, the debt service, life safety, and so on, and then combined, all funds, our beginning fund balance, our projected revenues, our expenditures, the variances, and then the projected ending balance. So that's kind of the budget, all funds at a glance. And this is kind of a busy chart, I know, but I like to include it, and that's why I give you a hard copy of that as well, but it kind of gives you a historical perspective of our financial summary and our current budget, and what we've done over the past several years since 2011 to the current year. Some of the key drivers in the budget, I kind of mentioned this, but I'll mention it again, property taxes are projected to increase by about 2.6%, local revenues are down 6.7% due to lower interest earnings, evidence-based funding is held flat, and that, as I mentioned, replaces the general state aid categorical funding. Our state aid and federal grants are being held flat, and our operating fund projected increases about 1.7%. Salary and benefits combined are 3.1% increase, the purchase services 18.9, supply and materials 20.5, increase in tuition of 21.5. Those percentages look rather high, those are compared to actuals, and we underspent, as I mentioned earlier, so that difference is greater, but if you look at the comparison of the, of the actual budget to budget, it's under a 2% increase, so about a 1.8% increase. Part of why purchase services bumped up is we're re-categorizing how we're spending our capital projects for our auditors, so a lot of those things are going into purchase services rather than capital because they don't meet that threshold, and then supplies and materials, we move some items out of purchase services into supply, so that's why there's a big jump there. If you looked at the tuition, that looks like a big jump, but actually, the budget is going down, I had that written, by about, I think, 4% if you compare the budget to budget. So they're showing an increase there, that's kind of a volatile expenditure area, so we don't want to cut that too thin because that can change dramatically if a student were to move in or something like that. So that's our all funds pie chart by revenue source. Property taxes, no surprise there, is the biggest chunk of it, followed by other local revenue, EBF is our state funding, the next two are actually state funding, and then our federal grants, so that's how the breakout looks with our funding across the funding And then our expenditures, how that shakes out, the salaries and benefits are the biggest, probably three-quarters of that pie there, followed by purchase services, supplies, capital outlay, and out-of-district tuition costs and debt payments. So those are the, the main expenditure drivers in the budget. And then our operating fund revenues, and this is just operating funds out, so those five funds I talked about earlier, the education fund represents the bulk of that, that's our largest fund, that represents 85% of all the revenues across the operating funds, followed by our O&amp;M fund, which is just under 8%, our transportation, IMRF, and working cash, and so on, follow after that. And then we move on to our operating fund expenditures, again, the ed fund, as you would expect, are the bulk of those expenditures across operating funds, 83%, followed by the O&amp;M, in the same order that the, the revenues were following in, and that's not unusual for a school district to show that being the largest source of expenditures. I did want to show the ed fund because that's, you know, our biggest fund, as we had mentioned, so that, you can see that the local sources are pushing 90%, and state and federal represent that difference, other amount of about 10, 12% or so, but we are heavily reliant on property taxes. And our expenditures by object, salary and benefits, and this is just for the ed fund, are that 68% and 11% are the salary and benefits, followed by those other expense categories. This kind of just shows you comparisons since 2013 of how we've tracked over the past, you know, seven years or so. We did have a couple of years where we, expenditures did exceed revenues in 2015 and 2017. Since 18, 2018, 2019, and we're projecting for 2020, we do, are projecting revenues to exceed expenditures they have in the past two years, we're hoping to, again, have that happen again in 2019-20. And then the next slide is our, kind of our fund balance historical perspective. You can see, we were kind of trending up a little bit there in the early years from 2011 to 2014, and then we started to dip a little bit. We took a bigger dip in 2016, 17, and then we're a little bit on the upward trend, 18 and 19, and hopefully, 20 will continue upwards of that trend as well. So that's kind of the, I know I went through that pretty quickly, but the proposed budget for 2019-20, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Thank you, Bruce. Very well, very good. So are there any questions or clarifications needed at this time from anyone in our audience? If not, we will close the public hearing for the 2019-2020 budget and move on to the Eileen, I think, if you can take this?
Well, good evening, thank you for having us tonight. All right, well, I've brought some special guests with us tonight because there is an award called the Illinois State Board of Education annually sponsors those who excel to honor individuals who have made significant contributions to our state's elementary and secondary schools. Excellence, meritorious service, and special recognition awards are presented in seven categories: classroom teacher, school administrator, principal, student support personnel, educational service personnel, school board member, community volunteer, team, and early career educator. Nomination material, materials are evaluated by a selection committee comprised of individuals who represent a variety of educational organizations. Awards of excellence winners in the classroom teacher category are finalists for the Illinois Teacher of the Year. Local school district leaders and members of school community nominate candidates. This year, Fenton High School nominated three staff members as award recipients. All three received honor for those who excel. First, special education teacher Cameron Kopp received special recognition for his outstanding service to our community. In addition to his classroom service, Cameron coaches athletics to our youth. A basketball parent from FHS wrote, "We are forever grateful that as working parents, we could work and not have to worry about our son as we know Coach Kopp would always be there. He has not only become his teacher, but he knows that our son looks up to him as a role model as he talks about his class and basketball at home. He deserves to be recognized for all he has done because he truly does care about his students, and he has always had their best interests at heart." A student athlete shared, "While Kopp wants to win, he knows that these sports are about so much more than a record. He uses these sports to push his athletes to abilities we never thought we could have. He was able to do this by motivating us and teaching us that hard work can equal desired results." Cameron is an amazing coach and teacher. We are proud that ISB also finds Cameron to be worthy of special recognition for her service to Fenton High School community. Second, Diamaro Velez received meritorious service for her outstanding service as a social worker, both our general and special education students. A student shared her lengthy story in her nomination, and here is part of what she shared. "Ms. Velez does not care about your past or the bad things that you have done. What matters to her is the future and how you move forward to be a better person than yesterday." A parent highlighted that a personal, that personal attention that Dio provided. The parent stated, "Ms. Velez makes each person feel that she interacts as if they are the only one. In a school of 1,500 kids and carrying half the, on her caseload, she finds time to provide quality service to our students. Today, the social, emotional well-being of our students is just as important as the academics we provide to the holistic child. For these reasons, we are proud that ISB finds Diamaro Velez to be worthy of meritorious service to the Fenton High School community." Lastly, Demetria Dana-Jelis received meritorious service for her outstanding service to our community as a teacher assistant. A student shares, "My day always starts off on a great note when I am greeted by her. She has a positive attitude and a smile first thing in the morning. I'm not always a morning person, so sometimes I just look at Ms. D and walk right past her. Even though I do not always acknowledge her in the morning, I am grateful for her being there and for being so welcoming in the morning." A teacher that nominated Dia shared this, "The amount of care, thoughtfulness, and compassion that Dia has brought to Fenton has single-handedly changed the trajectory of students' lives. That is powerful. We are proud that ISB finds Demetria Dana-Jelis to be worthy of this meritorious service to the Fenton High School community." While hard, while hard to do, given our excellent staff, these three professionals stand out from their peers in an exceptional ability to build relationships with students and other members of this community. They exemplify our core, three core values in the strategic plan and execute the relationship component to the max. Cameron, Dio, and Dia excel and work tirelessly for our students. They continue to provide top-notch service to our community because it is who they are and what they do. Congratulations on behalf of the Fenton Administration Team, Board of Education, and ISB. Enjoy your celebration in October at the ISB presentation of your award, and thank you for your service.
I have one additional award to present tonight, and this candidate is not here tonight, he's actually in Louisville receiving the award.
So on his behalf, I'll read a little bit about him and his award. Paul Welsh is a general counselor with a special interest and passion in government and military. He has been our liaison to all branches of the military. During the past few years, Mr. Welsh has gone above and beyond to ensure that the administrative team is aware of the opportunities we can provide to our students through the military. As part of his ongoing education and partnership with various professional organizations, Paul has kept current on policy and government relation, related issues as it relates to our students. He often briefs the counseling team with updates. This past July, Paul was notified that he had been nominated for and will be receiving an award this weekend from NACAC, the National Association for College Admission Counseling. The Government Relations Committee is bestowing this honor on Paul Welsh for his outstanding efforts in support of policy initiatives that promote equal access to higher education and encouraging student achievement and counselor excellence. The equity they mentioned here align with our strategic goals of providing equal opportunity for our students. As part of this award, the Government Relations Committee recognizes Paul's tireless work for low-income undocumented DACA students specifically seeking military careers. Mr. Welsh is unable to be with us this evening as he is in Louisville receiving his award for excellence in government relations at the National Association for College Admission Counseling Conference. We are proud of Paul's work and dedication in serving our students and the greater community. Congratulations, Paul.
Thanks, Eileen, we appreciate it. Last person we want to recognize, he's been here for four weeks now, our Director of Communication and Community Engagement, he was not here at the August Board meeting where he should have been introduced, but just want to give Rick a chance to say something here.
Hi, my name is Rick, I just wanted to thank you guys for approving my contract, I've been here for four weeks. This is exactly where I want to be, these are the teachers I want to work with, these are the students I want to work with, this is the community I want to work with. I couldn't imagine being anywhere else, so thank you very much, and I look forward to being here for a while.
All right, the next item on is public comments. Mary, do we have anyone?
We have no one signed up this evening.
No one signed up, okay, thank you. So we'll move on to the district reports, James?
Fantastic, we got a couple items right here. First one is the Zhengjai Educational Commission, we've got 19 Chinese educational leaders, mostly principals, coming on October 1st here at Fenton. Next slide, please, Jim? Real quick, there has been a revision on the schedule, they will be here at 9:00 AM and will stay until 12:30. The presentation will include a Fenton presentation, which Yovin and myself will lead, they will observe seven classes, will have question and answer, I'm sure they'll want to probably say, hey, look, what's the difference between the American educational school, school system and other school system around the world, and will have lunch. Everyone is invited, including the board and administrators, as well as some teachers, from lunch from 11:30 to 12:30.
Doing lunch in the cafeteria so they can see what the difference is?
Actually, we can have lunch here. That's a good idea, so we can have question and answer, we're going to try to tackle two things, because then afterwards, immediately right afterwards, they're going to go to the regional office of education, there's a presentation there for them with Dr. Rossetti, so, meet you later.
So you want us here for lunch?
I would, if you can make it.
Just for lunch?
Just for, you could stay, you could come at 9:00.
But, I mean, you would prefer us here for lunch?
I would prefer for lunch, that's okay.
Okay, that's all, I just want to know from my calendar, that's okay. Nothing's dark, I'm just asking.
It should be fun. In reality, this is a huge honor for Fenton, we were chosen out of all the DuPage schools, part of the reasons are diversity, part of our religion is strong to Michelle and Yovin in regards to the professional development that our teachers receive, and also our equity journey, including the AP District of Year, that's why we were chosen. Next one is Technology Center of DuPage. This year, I really wanted the board to understand what's taking place at TCD, in particular, dual credit, okay, dual credit. Next slide. So folks know, there's about 20 pathways, career pathways there at the Technology Center of DuPage, and you see them right here, anywhere from architect to educational training to hospitality to cosmetology and so forth. Next slide. Who makes up TCD? We know we send kids there, right, 54, 59 kids here, and I know some of the board members had kids there that went there. It's really composed of 14 school districts, okay, and Fenton is a co-owner of TCD. What does that mean? We pay tuition to keep them going, okay? So we want our money back. I sit on the board, as well as 14 other superintendents. Next slide. What we're going to focus on is dual credit. Real quickly, dual credit is really, really positive, okay? Educators believe it's positive. Why? Because students, high school students can receive college credit while they're in high school. An example of this is TCD. How much college credits can, can students really earn? So there it is, there's about 17 programs from 2014 to present, that's the blue line, the yellow line is total numbers of dual credit courses offered. This year is 47, total numbers of college credit hours, credit hours and credit courses are two different things, offered to 142. So that's a possibility of 142 college course credit hours. Next slide. How many do, how does dual credit help students and families with the cost of college? There it is in dollar and cents. So if one of our students would like to enroll in cosmetology for two years, they get a certificate, each year, mom and dad would save, it's approximately $3,000 to $4,000. So we want to show, hey, look, not only are they getting college credit, but we're saving our taxpayers some money as well, tuition money. Next slide. Here's the total out of all the programs, so TCD in 2014 had about approximately 6,000 total credits that students earn, how much is that worth in dollars? About $790,000, currently is at 771. So these are dollars that our community are benefiting from. Next slide. How many students actually benefit from the dual credit? I would say about 2/3. So why aren't all the students getting the So why aren't all the students getting the college dual-credit hours? Because not all of their career pathways have dual credit, and not all students are successful in the classes. Let's just say it that way, okay? Next slide. Now, let's go back to Fenton. This year, we have fifty-six students going to TCD, and here are some classes. Our number one is autobody, okay? Thirteen students there. Next one is nursing assistance, CNA. I also got my CNA from a program like this. That's what I utilized to pay for my college at the University of Illinois. Very good job. I was with a certification. I think I was making about ten, eleven dollars per hour at that time. So that example is, hey, look, I could get my high school diploma, I could get dual-credit, college credit, and I could also get a certificate, so once I leave high school, I'm able to work. Okay? Let's just go back real quick, Jim. Any question there in regards to TCD?
How is this... How did the students find out about it?
Through... I'll let Yovon speak in a minute, but number one, it's well-known in our community. Number two, our counselors talk about it through their communication. Hey, look, what would you like to do next year, or what's your plan for years? Am I missing anything? Yovon?
It's in our curriculum guide.
Right.
In terms of inclusion, you know, are there... Is it pretty equitable? You know, is there a certain group of kids that lean towards this? Or is it basically any... I mean, I know you mentioned that it's more of a career track, right? So, you know, is there any... My point is, are the students equally able to do it as long as their career path is that way? Or is there also room for expansion of...
Let me start off this way, Kit. This is open to all of our students.
Okay.
All of our students. Obviously, some students have an affinity for it, especially if their parents or their parents are involved in that business. There's an affinity for it. I don't think there is a gatekeeper aspect to it, to that. Everyone has access to that, right? I will be honest with you, like, you know, as part of the budget as well, tuition is about four thousand five hundred dollars per student. But there's a... I think it outweighs the benefits there perfectly. Yovon, you want to answer?
I would say that a lot of these are capstone classes for these kids. So they might have had autos, or they might have had something here that would be an orientation class for them, and then that's how they would lead into one of these classes. So in terms of, it's usually maybe a passion for them, or something that they might have had an interest for, so that's how they wind up in some of these areas. So they're well-prepared as they walk into it. In terms of tapping actual, a certain demographics of kids, we don't. It's whoever, whatever the passion they have for it, so.
Michelle, did you have any?
I think Yovon covered that. You know, it's just...
Yeah, if they're in early childhood, they might have the...
Right.
To go on and, yeah. If the student has a particular passion or career goal that matches, that's how we determine who utilizes it and who doesn't. Some students don't have set career goals, you know, and some really do, and some align with what we offer at TCD, so.
I think the kids pretty much know, like, for instance, Lewis loved film and video, so they have something like that there, and they helped him, kind of guided him towards that, and he earned nine credits, so, pretty...
That's money.
The difference between this and AP is this is a college class itself. So once they earn the grade at the end, they get the credit. They don't have to take another test to gain the credit. So once they take that class, whatever grade they earn, that's the grade that will show up on a transcript from them. So unlike AP, where the student has to actually take it and earn a three, four, or five, this, whatever the grade is, as they are in the class, that goes as a college class as they go forward. So that's the dual-credit terminology.
We are starting to really message dual credit to our school stakeholders. Why? This is going to get really, really popular in a couple of years, I believe, because, as you know, expenditures in colleges are just incredible right now. How could we start saving money for our taxpayers? This would be a tale of, let's start taking college classes while they're in high school. So I just really want to say, okay, dual-credit, TCD, two different aspects, but they work together. I want you guys to be aware of that, okay? Next one, e-learning. Before I hand it off to Yovon, just real quick, e-learning stands for emergency, not electronic, okay? Emergency skill. And that explains the whole thing. E-learning is, we have an emergency, like we did Monday, okay, where the pipes were broken, and we couldn't have water in the school or flush the toilet, okay? We would like to utilize this option so that the curriculum can move forward, kids can continue learning, and so forth. Most of the time, we will utilize this if there's inclement weather, like a polar vortex, or it's negative seventy windshield outside. We know that's good, not just for the little kids, but for big kids as well, as well as our adults who will be communicating back and forth. We have... The board gave us authority about two months ago to move forward for Yovon and Jim to talk to our teachers and staff, okay, in regards to this, get their input, and see where we go from there. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Yovon.
So we've met with... We started this process early last year as we took a look at it. So we've met with the appropriate stakeholders in terms of our FEA. We've met with the president, and then we've had committee work with several teachers, as well as FLOS members within our area the last couple of weeks. So we've started with some questions that were done in a pilot. This was done in a pilot in several other districts. So we've started our application for learning, which we're going to put forward to the ROE. We've gotten input from our staff. We've gotten input from our support staff in terms of what this would look like. Our next steps are actually a parent notification, letting them know why this is something that's important. I think what Mr. Ontango said is very key. It's moving the curriculum forward. So this is something that our seniors would hate dramatically, because, you know, usually they just miss it at the end of the year. Now, they'll have to do the work to continue going forward on that next day, so, not that we're doing this because we want our seniors to hate this, but the key is moving curriculum forward. Before, it was just added on at the end of the year. So even if you had a first semester class that you missed, it still got added on at the end of the year as just a day to kind of finish. So for us, this is really, really important, and for the educators to actually keep that curriculum going forward and keep the discussion, or the assignments, or whatever may be the case. So we've been working on that process. So we're going to let our parents know, we're going to, through our Bison Time, Resource Time, we're going to have our students figure it out. All of this is done through a learning management system, which is, we currently use Google Classroom. All of our... I shouldn't say all of our teachers. I would say over ninety-five percent of our teachers at this point are on Google Classroom. We do have training opportunities for them. We will have a 215 timeframe for them to discuss e-learning and to get some more training. And then we will give this out to parents and let them know why we're doing this as well. We will have a public hearing, I believe it's going to be next time, and then, once you guys do the final approval on that, then we'll get it to the board of... I'm sorry, to the Regional Office, and then we'll get it out to everybody else. And the key to this for us, too, is constant feedback. So when we do have an e-learning day, we're going to send out a survey to parents, to students. How did it work? What worked? What didn't work? So we're going to constantly have feedback on this so that we can continue to refine it. So Lyden, which is just to the east of us, they've done this for probably about four years now, and they've done it as a pilot program. Gurnee up north has done it. West Chicago has recently done it as a pilot. So we have a lot of places, and we've made a lot of contacts with people to see kind of how they've done it, and we're just kind of taking theirs and making it to our best fit, so.
And I'll end it with this. We're trying to get input from everyone. Right now, it's the parents' turn. The board had heard it. Our staff has heard it. Our kids are hearing it right now. Parents are going to be communicating. We're going to have a public hearing so they can voice their opinion at the October board meeting. You guys will approve it or not approve it in October. We're hoping that you approve it. We really, really hard here. I also want to give a shout-out to Jim over there, who did a lot of work in regards to this.
So this would take the place of adding on a snow day at the end?
Correct.
So do they log hours that they're studying?
Yeah, that's actually part of the application process, is to show how. So Google Classroom, which is our learning management system, it actually, it has an electronic log of students when they log in. There's also a process for them to check in with certain teachers, so that way we know that's how we'll take attendance with that as well. So, yeah, there is a way for them to make sure that we get... That's part of the state requirement for the e-learning, is to have five hours of learning that goes on.
So is this live? Are we onboarded already?
Well, so oddly enough, teachers are using the LMS. They're already using Google Classroom for many things. So this isn't that out of the ordinary for them. This will just be a set timeframe that they'll have to check in, be available for students, that kind of stuff. And again, it depends on what their curriculum is for some of them, as you know, and maybe you've seen some of the things that have gone on as we've posted on Twitter and things like that. There are certain classes that are going like fishbowl discussions, things like that for students. It might be a discussion that's on it for them, so they might just follow along in a link to have a discussion. It might be an actual assignment that occurs. Again, the idea here is to push the curriculum forward and not to just kind of stick it at the end of the time to get us, so that's why.
And since most of this revolves around inclement weather, it would seem that most of the time, you should already know the day before that using e-learning would be a possibility. So in other words, the teacher, everyone would kind of be aware that tomorrow could be an e-learning day.
Right.
Yeah, we're going to try and communicate that as early as we can, but obviously, DuPage County and when James works with the superintendents, they all have their own mindset around when to call school and when not to call school. So we're going to try and keep that as consistent as we can, and that'll be something that James is going to have to work with, with the rest of the DuPage County superintendents. But you're right, Paul, you can kind of see when it's coming, but there are timeframes that we have to make sure that we let them, let our staff and let our students and parents know according to the state. We have to actually give them a specific time of when we're going to tell them that this is going to happen, so.
Mr. Lazarevic just gave me this leadway to a funny story. Usually, we get up at four o'clock in the morning to see if we're going to close the school down, right? And there's usually seventeen of us on the phone call.
Seventeen.
And some individuals say, we need more data. Look at the news. Look at the news. It's been like that for twelve hours. Let's make a decision, so.
Well, last year, James and I are calling each other, and he's like, ah, a western district, we won't name any names, a western district from us was like, well, it's not really snowing here, and we're like, well, you don't live by O'Hare. It is snowing here. Like, this is not good, so, yeah.
It won't come your way, right? So, no, thank you. It won't come your way. But, yeah, if we know there's going to be a huge storm, there's going to be, it's going to be negative seventy-five degrees, we would like the student to know as soon as possible, as well as our staff.
This could open the door for being more preemptive, too, I would imagine, which is nice. Better planning, yeah, for sure.
This next one, community report. Extremely excited about this. Extremely excited about this. What you have right here, I'm going to also hand it over to Rick, who's worked very hard in regards to this. The board has first dibs on this, okay? This is basically going out in the next couple of days. It's our first... Jackie, did you get one? Report to our community. It's part of our strategic plan. It tells about the great news that's happening here at Fenton. We've got to remember and be cognizant that about anywhere between seventy to eighty percent of residents in Wooddale or Bensonville do not have students here at the district. So this is, this might be their only touch point to Fenton. We will get better in regards to this. This is a first great attempt. We've been wanting to do this for a while. With that, Rick, you want to talk about this a little bit?
Yeah, so we chose to keep this fairly high level. For the people who aren't familiar with Fenton, let's just keep it to the nuts and bolts, what's important. We're graduating kids. We're giving kids great opportunities, because we don't want to lose anybody with too many details, too many facts, too many, like, things they're unfamiliar with, because the important thing is, the school's successful. We've got ninety-four percent of our kids are graduating. A lot of them are choosing career paths through college, trade schools, or whatnot. And wanted to show our actual kids. So a lot of the other schools that do these types of reports have stock art, so I made sure to rummage through a lot of images that were compiled by everybody here, and want them to know the kids are happy here. We're doing a lot of good work, so it's the most important information. We've got state champions, we're graduating kids, we're maintaining our buildings, and we're the number one in the country.
Thanks, Rick. Next slide. This one will be real quick. As you know, we have a huge turnout for the coffee with the superintendent. Last time, we had one. So this year, we're doing a little something different. We're going to have it at the parent conference while parents are here, from four to six. Board members are welcome. Admins will be there. We'll be serving coffee. We hope to have at least more than two.
Not hot dogs?
No hot dog this time. Okay. Next slide. Yeah. For your request, we had two. Special needs transportation costs was requested, as well as our quarterly smart procurement, quarterly vendor requests, so they have been given those informations. Lastly, board slides. We need your pictures, okay? Rick will be here after the board meeting to take individual pictures. We need to post them as a group, in particular you, Kit. So we need a picture if you can make, either today or another day.
Didn't they take pictures? Didn't we come in for pictures?
Do you want to use the last year's one?
Oh, I don't.
No, he wants to. You don't. You guys are welcome. I just, we just need your pictures so we can post it.
Come encourage me, because I need it.
Could I give you one from nineteen?
And lastly, portrait of a graduate. You know, this is one of our big tasks this year, our project, part of the strategic plan. I'm assuming that all board members, all individuals in this room have taken the thought exchange, which is basically a survey. It's closed now. Just to give you some numbers, eight hundred and thirty-one participants took place over there. That's pretty good. Five hundred and four students, the largest group. That's what we wanted. One hundred and eighty-six staff, one hundred and seventeen parents, and twenty-four community members. So, next step is October, the committee meeting, which consists of individuals from three districts. That's District Two, District Seven, and District One Hundred. Will meet October 1st, October 22nd, November 4th. Representative for our board is Jackie, Kit, and Paul, and it will be a special board meeting. You will have to open it up, Mr. Weideman, and run it like a meeting and close it as well. Okay, because we have three board members. We would have 5:30 dinner, 5:30 to 6:00, and 6:00 to 9:00.
Okay. Thank you, James.
Thank you.
We move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? Anything they see? No? Okay, then, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Patty.
I'll second it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jackie. A little coffee?
Peyton Howell?
Yes.
Jallowich?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Ting Pelpong?
Yes.
Weideman?
Yes.
We do have some people here who are on the consent agenda to approve for employment.
Mary? Or, I'm sorry, Sam? People here that are here, we should recognize that's on the consent agenda that's being hired in the audience.
Mrs. Navarez.
Sandy's here. Yeah, we didn't see her. Sam didn't see you. We apologize. Sam, you want to introduce him?
That's Sandy Navarez, who we were hiring as a clerical substitute and registered nurse substitute. Thank you for...
Sandy, there's a great picture of your daughter in here.
Sandy, there's a great picture of your daughter in here.
Yes, no, no, this is this is mine.
Okay, and that was that was all, right? In attendance, okay.
Can I add something real quick? We didn't talk about, not to the consent agenda, did you see the September seventeenth?
I did.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Yes, I'm sorry, I should've said.
All right, all right, all right.
I actually was gonna email you yesterday as well. Happy Constitution Day!
Happy Constitution Day! Our social studies staff was awesome, so, all right, I just wanted to add that.
Well done.
Sorry.
And Sandy's gonna be doing part-time?
Yes.
She's a substitute and part-time.
Yeah, clerical substitute, and also she's a registered nurse. So when our nurse is like in a conference or out, she's gonna substitute him, rather than trying to pay an agency to have someone come in. Could learn, you know, our system.
Very good, very good. Okay, so the consent agenda motion has passed. We move on to the discussion action items. First one is the acceptance and approval of the public hearing and the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty budget. Yeah, there are three parts.
Okay.
Oh, wow, here we go. May I have a motion that the Board of Education accept the certificate stating that the tentative budget for twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty was prepared and available for public inspection thirty days prior to the hearing and the publisher's affidavit of legal notice of public hearing and in incorporated the same into the official minutes of the meeting?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Mary Ann, thank you, Julia. Roll call, please, Mary.
Peyton Howell?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Ting Pao-Pang?
Yes.
Jallowich?
Yes.
Weideman?
Yes. All right, the second part is, may I have a motion that the Board of Education adopt the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty budget resolution as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Patty, thank you, Mary Ann.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Peyton Howell?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Ting Pao-Pang?
Yes.
Jallowich?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Weideman?
Yes. Motion passed. The third part is, may I have a motion that the Board of Education adopt the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty budget as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Julia. Uh, roll call, please.
Peyton Howell?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Ting Pao-Pang?
Yes.
Jallowich?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Weideman?
Yes. Okay, good. So the next item is the staff laptop replacement. And James, I think you'll take that.
I'll take that, Alan. Just real quick, this is the end last cycle of our laptops. There's about twenty-four laptops that we would like to replace. It's approximately four to five years old, it will go to our staff and some administrators. Uh, this is part of the technology budget. Uh, these laptops are old and ready to be recycled.
Thank you, James. May I have any any questions regarding that?
So it says additional fiscal year twenty-twenty, is that, is there, is there more than what we had originally?
I don't believe so, but Jim could give that, give more details to that.
Just very quickly, we ordered a group of them in July, if you remember, right after the the school year started. We weren't, we were in the budget process, we weren't really very far in the budget process in terms of really nailing down how much we had. So we based it on basically repeating what we did the year before, even though we knew we wanted a couple dozen more in order to finish out our cycle. But we were conservative in that we didn't wanna spend money that we weren't sure we were going to have in the budget and be able to allocate for this in the budget. After a couple months, and now we have the budget, and as you've just approved, this is in that budget, in the tech budget. So we can now complete the the purchase that we'd hoped to do this year.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Then may I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the fiscal year twenty-twenty purchase of twenty-four Dell Model seventy-three ninety laptop computers from CDWG for a total not to exceed twenty-three thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars?
So moved.
Thank you, Mary Ann, thank you, Jackie. Roll call, please, Mary.
Peyton Howell?
Yes.
Ting Pao-Pang?
Yes.
Jallowich?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Weideman?
Yes. Okay, motion passed. Uh, the next item is a discussion item only regarding state mandated review of bullying policy, and James, it's yours.
Every two years, uh, we are mandated by the Illinois State Board of Education is to review our bullying policy. Our bullying policy is two years old, from the Illinois Association of School Board, which is part of your organization. Uh, they recommend this, we reviewed it with administrator, including Mr. Lazarevic, Sam Benson, our deans, and our other administrators. It's a very thorough bullying policy, it goes from cyberbullying to hazing to sexual assault and so forth. We do not see or recommend any changes to it. We believe it's wide as well as deep in regards to what it's trying to encompass.
So that will be then on the next month to hold on, correct?
No, it's, uh, it's just a review of our bullying policy, and what we're recommending, it looks good, we don't wanna change, we don't wanna back from it, keep it as is, just like what the Illinois Association of School Board has recommended.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, the next discussion item is regarding sustainability policies. Kit had inquired regarding our sustainability policies that we have here at Fenton. James replied by email, we all did receive that email, regarding the present policies we do have, plus best practices that we employ here at Fenton regarding sustainability. So we have that response, we have that information that James provided. Kit has further questions or discussion regarding this?
So, we've already making the effort to be as responsible to the environment as much as possible with a lot of making sure it's cost-effective, um, making sure it's environmentally responsible, I would say. So we've already making efforts on it. What I'd like to propose to is to actually draft, develop, and implement a values-based policy within our our school, just to acknowledge that that's a value that we hold. So, again, we're already doing it, might as well acknowledge that in our in our books. So, um, that's what I'd like to propose and 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 discuss and see if if that would align with our school. I'm not certain if there's a model for it, and I I know that with I A S B, um, I'm I'm not certain. I I looked through the, just the the models, and there's not such a thing. So we 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 may be one of the first few schools to do it. So I wanna just present that to to our board to see if that's something of value, where it aligns with our our.
Strategic planning.
Yeah, our planning.
So even though we're already doing it, you just wanna name it and have it.
Acknowledge it.
Acknowledge it.
Acknowledge it as part of our.
Right.
Part of our strategic plan.
Consideration.
Yeah.
Right, so basically, so so the 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 best practices and the policies that we already have in place, you're, correct me if I'm wrong, you wanna put it in a framework where we call it a sustainability policy? And then add a statement that we value this as a school and so forth to employ all of all of these line items?
Right.
That were with the that were currently, that were currently following.
Right, so, you know, same thing goes, we have policies for bullying, we have policies for, um, uh, you know, how to handle certain situations. This would be just a part of our our policies.
Here's what I'm hearing. I'm not here, I I heard strategic plan, I don't think that's the right place for it.
Right, exactly, I wouldn't say that.
Policies. Um, what I'm hearing is to take the two policies that we have as best practices and call it sustainability value, um, values, perhaps, policy, something to that effect. And it's referring to these two policies that's in place, as well as the best practice that we have listed.
Right, just to, just to make sure that's one of the items that we can consider going forward. Again, we're already doing that, so.
So, for example, hey, look, if someone asks, what is our sustainability policy? Hey, look, we've got something better, it's called sustainability, um, values policy, and it's here, and it's gonna re-point you to these two policies that's already in place and have been approved, four point one five and four point seven zero that I gave you comment, is that, is that what we're looking at?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I, can I do some investigation and look look into it a little bit more to see if how, um, how it can be done?
Sure.
In regards to that.
Yeah.
Okay, it's still open, still open for discussion if someone has something, that was just my input.
No, it's fine, I don't know that it's necessary to actually value it as a policy, but we do it, but go ahead and investigate.
Investigate, okay. No, bring it up next, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I I I think so. I mean, they, I mean, these are items that we're already doing, and these are, these are items that students are involved with, or the or the school is already doing, uh, you know, in the interest of sustainability. And, um, yeah, I I mean, I think it deserves more investigation.
Right.
So the benefit would be, Kit?
Yeah, um, you know, so in terms of, I think, um, strategic planning, so our our strategic plan is to, um, you know, have responsible, uh, kids growing up with character and all those things. So I think part of, part of that value is to be responsible for our ecosystems, environment, things like that, going forward. That could be, again, already efforts we're already doing, but acknowledging that as something that we value.
Maybe, and to raise consciousness.
Absolutely, awareness, consciousness, um, to to drive that into adulthood. You know, and that could be already stuff that we're doing, like, for example, from from the email reply from, uh, James, um, we're already trying to reduce, um, plastic.
Paper.
Paper waste.
Paper, a lot of different, these fronts, you know, looking at.
Recycling.
Uh, reducing our waste, all those things, I think, um, would would be a, a, you know, a benefit to to everyone. And, uh, again, I'm not certain, 'cause I I haven't checked on other schools, um, but, again, we we could be one of the first schools to look at that and say, hey, this is something that's important, not only to our school, but just as a model for other schools to to look at, is to put this stuff in place. Again, most schools are already doing it as a as a cost-effective measure, but to have actually part of our our core values is is, I think, a a a statement for for everybody else. Yeah, so I'll leave it then, I'll leave it then.
Sounds good, yeah, I mean, we can look into it further, I I think, I mean, does everyone else agree that, I mean, we can look into it further?
Yeah, I think it could be a stretch, but I think we should at least investigate.
At least investigate, and then see also, um, how far a statement like that, you know, that we don't do an overreach as far as the statement, when we make decisions, let's say, on future purchases and so forth. You know, we would have, we would have to be very mindful of the statement.
Right, it's language, um, you know, making sure that we we're more practical, you know, but at the same time, consider those values, what that means to us in purchasing, in operations, in all aspects of our school, for sure.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay. Then we'll move on to the committee reports. James?
Sure.
If you wanna take that, and we can move to, you know, to each, to each group.
Sure.
As we go along.
Sure, okay. So you wanna do Bensonville Community Foundation?
Foundation, yeah.
That's Juliette.
Juliette.
We have a meeting Thursday.
Awesome.
So we'll have something more next next month.
I communicated, um, communicated with Juliette that they wanted data in regards to how many of our AP students, um, are low-income. I gave that number, Juliette reported they want a little bit, something more specific, I'm working on that, and I'll try to get that to you as soon as possible. The question was, how many of our low-income students couldn't take the tests because of the fees?
Correct.
And that'll probably be a survey, that's gonna take me.
Were there some?
I'm sure there was, I'm sure there was. We probably, someone probably say, you know, and I'll pay for you, in that effect, but I gotta ask, we gotta do a survey.
Right.
Michelle and I will work on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Finance is, uh, for the next board meeting?
Yes, uh, there will be a finance, uh, facilities committee meeting, uh, next, uh, at our next board meeting. It will start at six, everyone's invited. I believe, yep, uh, Mary Ann and Paul are the co-chairs, and in regards to that, we we recommend you attend to that. We will have a meeting with our architect in regards to a facilities assessment, to really assess our facilities.
At the same time?
Uh, no, we're meeting this, uh, next week, next week. Do you, do you have that date for our next board meeting?
October twenty-third.
October twenty-third.
Yes. Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay. That's okay. The next one is the Illinois Association of School Board, that's Paul, uh, that's at the Triple I Conference. You have in front of you the eighteen resolutions, so remember this from last year, okay? In particular, page four. So we ask you to review it, the administrators have started reading the resolution. Paul will need to gauge in regards to where to vote, where's that page, did you find it right, what page? Page four? Yeah, that's it. Line doesn't matter, can I hold this?
Yeah.
Just real quick, if you guys could read the resolution, and we're gonna do a straw.
Well, no.
Hold on, okay, you'll read for yourself. You did not hear that. Okay, she's kidding.
I'm kidding.
Okay. Anything else, Paul, in regards to?
Well, no, I mean, it'll be the same as last time, you know, kid, you weren't here, but basically, read through it and see how you wanna vote. We take, we take a straw poll and consensus, we proceed with the consensus. So then at Triple I, then the vote is cast, depending on how we voted, as one vote at at the at the conference, uh, as as a district, so.
All eight hundred and thirty school districts will be there, and that's how many school districts in Illinois. Now, just in case you don't read it, there will be a summary that Sam and I will put together. Thanks, Sam.
Don't be a quiz.
So, but try to read it.
It's all in here?
It's all in there, yes.
Okay. Cliff notes?
There's there's no cliff note.
You have twenty minutes.
Okay, good.
No problem.
Oh, Lent is, um.
Leo.
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 I didn't make it.
I I attended, uh, real quick, Lent as, uh, it's still the three issues in Illinois, is, uh, is basically pension, okay, property taxes, and funding, same thing.
Is Lent again?
Uh, legislation branch of two page.
Okay, and then that's it, Leo and Patty.
Uh, it was due the superintendent's meeting.
Right.
Well, that's the reason we didn't attend.
And we we covered budget, just like what Bruce did, uh, and we also heard a a talk in regards to the hearing itinerary, what was their job like, um, in regards to, um, individuals that service students who cannot hear.
Okay. And then the last one, policy committee, which we just had, and anything new? Right. New business, uh, the finance, oh, the finance facility, facilities committee meeting will be October twenty-third in the ARC, so that'll be the finance committee. And then we will review, it'll be the review of property tax levy, and I believe, we have a guest speaker there?
No, that's next one, that's the financial projection, Mr. Bruce.
The financial projection is, that'll be November, not.
This will be a Bruce presentation.
That's a Bruce, so we got, so we got you, Bruce.
We love Bruce. We like you.
She's spreading out a little bit. Oh, terrible.
Which one's that, is that November?
No, October.
October.
November, I'm actually here for sure.
Okay.
It's your birthday?
So that'll be November then. But October, we have you, Bruce.
Does it have a nice tie on?
Okay, so then then the last item is the public hearing approval for the e-learning plan, which we, which was discussed already.
Yes.
So that's going out to the parents, and then, and they can come and participate if they want.
Wait, for the, the hearing, yes.
And they get to listen to Bruce.
They might really like Bruce.
Right. So we, I know, so we, well, I'm waiting. Yeah, for the jokes to stop, yeah. But we, all right, now we have to move into closed session, we have a couple of items that we have to cover in closed session. Oh, boy, okay. So, may I have a motion and a second to go into closed session for the purpose of the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. However, a meeting to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of a public body that is subject to the local government, Wage Increase Transparency Act may not be closed and shall be open to the public.